One thing I would like to point out that tomorrow is the eighteenth anniversary of the September eleventh attacks in New York City and Pentagon, in which over three thousand people lost their lives. As we stand for the invocation, I would ask that we take a moment of silence to remember those civilians and also first responders who've lost their lives. Also, I want to welcome two cadets from the Air Force here in ROTC program at Carl Albert High School. There are Cadet Van Barkleyo, who is a senior at Carl Albert and will be joining the Air Force upon graduation, and also Cadet Butler, who is also a junior at Carl Albert, and she'll be joining the Air Force upon graduation, and he'll be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, please stand and take a moment of silence.
Almighty Lord, we come before your throne with humble hearts tonight. Father, we're thinking about those who have given the ultimate sacrifice with their lives, not only, Lord, in a private setting, as was the case in nine eleven, but in a public service way, as so many have, both foreign and abroad, serving this great nation. Father, we thank you for the blessing of this great country, and we're most thankful for those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for its freedom. Father, those who are ensuring that tonight, both foreign and abroad, we ask your peace and comfort and protection be upon them, their families as well while they're away. Father, thank you for this great state and this wonderful city that we enjoy and the quality of life we enjoy here in this small place in the world. Father, we have men and women who have very difficult decisions before them tonight. We ask that your blessing be upon them, your wisdom and discernment be upon their hearts and their minds. Guide them and give them peace in their decisions. Father, we thank you for the servants that serve this community and provide great quality services, in a public safety way, in an internal way, in a public works way. Thank you for those dedicated servants, Lord, and we ask those who are out in the field tonight, ensuring that things are safe, our citizens are protected, our properties protected, the water and the sewer are flowing properly, be with them this night as they serve. We thank you for the ultimate sacrifice that you and your son made on our behalf, the blood that was shed on the cross, the forgiveness from sin that we have as a result. Thank you, Jesus, for being willing to go. It's in your holy name I pray.
We ask you to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go into our public announcements, and we do have one proclamation to do tonight. I do want to announce that eighteen months ago, we lost a firefighter, Chief Reese Morrison, due to an unexpected heart attack. On the twenty-first of September in Colorado Springs, Colorado, at the International Association of Firefighters Museum of Memorial Wall, Chief Morrison will be added to that wall. Several of our firefighters will be going up and attending that ceremony. It's a very solemn ceremony. It's sorrowful that we're adding one of our first responders to that, but Chief Morrison was a wonderful individual, a fine Christian, fine father and husband, and also a fine firefighter. And although we're sorrowful for his loss, we're glad that he's been memorialized on this wall. So, please keep that family in your prayers as that weekend comes up. With that being said, any further announcements? Community announcements?
Yes, Mayor, a few things. Veterans Day Parade, just a reminder for our citizens to put on their calendars, Monday, November eleventh at ten a.m. And then, second, we have received our September sales tax report, and our sales tax and use tax was up about ninety-three thousand dollars year over year, which is a good thing for Midwest City. For the year, we are two-point-eight-five percent or two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand up for sales and use tax versus the previous year, and for this budget versus our projection, we're up about two-point-five-six percent or two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So, it's good news. Citizens are doing a good job shopping in Midwest City, so we thank them for that.
I have three related community announcements. This Friday is the Midwest City High School Homecoming Parade, and it will be principally along Fifteenth Street, for those of you who want to come out and watch the homecoming parade. The twenty-first is the Steve Owens Memorial Run. If you're interested in participating or volunteering with that, there's information available, kind of a plead on social media about that. And the fifth of October is the Midwest City Art Fest in Town Center, from, I believe it starts at eleven a.m. that morning.
Any other announcements?
National Rally, October first, this year, on Tuesday. In your neighborhoods, everybody get out and meet your neighbors, and raise some more people there. So, that's why it's a very important event.
Anything else? Okay, with that being said, we're going to honor one of our employees.
We have a lot of, we about have five hundred wonderful employees in this city that dedicate their lives, just like police officers and firefighters, of serving the city, and C.W. worked in our fleet maintenance, and we have, Craig, what, five hundred different vehicles, from everything, from lawn mowers to big diesel trucks, and they have to be maintained and they have to be running to provide you with the services, and this is the guy behind the scenes that does that. Unfortunately, he's decided to retire. Did you find your replacement yet?
No, I was asking Craig about that a while ago, and he's working on it.
Okay. But one of the honors that we have as council is to honor these young men and women that serve us, just like everybody else, and I want you to meet C.W. or Colin Welsh and honor him. Whereas Colin Welsh began his employment in the city of Midwest City in October nineteen-seventy-seven, and retires February twenty-twenty as a Technician Three with Fleet Services. Whereas Colin has been an outstanding employee, working hard, striving continually to improve himself, and those working under him, and by leading by example, his skilled craftsmanship has, without a doubt, brought professionalism to the city's fleet department, and whereas he excels at all he sets his mind to do, and is well-respected and has received Employee of the Month, Employee of the Year awards. So therefore, I'm Matt Dukes, the mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim September tenth Colin Welsh Day in the city of Midwest City, and I urge all the citizens to show your appreciation to Colin for his substantial contributions to your city. Colin, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good luck.
You got one? Again, congratulations, Colin. Good luck, Tina.
We've retired out about two hundred years of experience this year alone. All the boomers are starting to retire out, and there's a big experience gap, so if you know anybody that needs a job, we're hiring. So ladies and gentlemen, we're now going into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council, or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in direct order. Chair, entertain the motion.
Mayor, we need to pull item fifteen on the consent agenda.
Okay, the motion needs to include pulling item fifteen.
Motion to approve with the exception of item fifteen.
Second.
I've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, any of you saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? Extinction, motion carries.
Item fifteen, discussion and consideration of approving the purchase of custom development software enhancements for in-code public safety with Tyler Technologies, in amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty thousand as a part of the Midwest City, moving Midwest City forward two thousand and eighteen public safety bond projects. We just wanted to pull that off to make sure the council understood this was one of our bond projects and to enhance our AutoCAD system and also work on the program in the fire department specifically.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is any action needed on that?
Will need approval.
Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, any of you saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Now ladies and gentlemen, we move into the discussion items of our agenda, and I'm going to take executive privilege and move item five to the forefront. I know most of you are here to discuss the bond project in the original square mile. It has been suggested and well-received that we pull this item and not take any action on it and bring it back in January, reason being, we're doing traffic studies and doing some other studies to make sure that we're making the right decision. Trust me on this, we've heard your concerns and we've heard what you've said, and we don't take that lightly at all. Your council is tuned in. We don't want to make a bad decision. We don't want to make this decision that's going to adversely affect you, your neighborhood, or you personally. That's why we're pulling it, that's why we're pushing it all the way into January to make sure that we have sufficient data in front of us before we make a decision on the zoning request. So with that being said, we will not be discussing this particular item because we're pulling it and taking no action. Now, I don't want to take any more of your precious time by holding you here. You are welcome to get up and discuss anything with the council during the public discussion portion of our agenda, but this particular, and you can talk about that particular item if you want, but keep in mind, since it's no longer an agenda item, us as a council, because of the Open Meetings Act, will not be able to engage with you on a one-on-one conversation as we would anytime else. So again, we've taken your concerns seriously, we take them seriously, we're listening as a governmental body, and we're not going to take any action that's going to adversely affect the city, period. So with that being said, we're pulling this item and we'll move back into the top of our discussion agenda. I want to again, thank you for being here, you're more than welcome to stay, and address us in the discussion portion of our agenda. Again, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I pose a question to the council, that in January, due to the inclement weather that so many times it is so heavy, would it not be more realistic to push it out somewhat further, maybe to March?
Well, I was, I was, I was doing that as a request of Pam, because we were getting into holidays. If in fact, I would like for you to work through Pam as your spokesman.
Kim.
If January does not work for you, contact Ms. Eads, Pam, or myself, and we work a different thing. But we are getting, huh?
It's Kim, Mayor.
I'm Kim, I'm sorry. I don't know where I got that, but anyway, sure, we're open to that. So with that being said, we're going to go ahead and move into our discussion.
Mr. Mayor, something, as they ever been studied done, on the impact of having the parking complex in relationship over there as a parking.
Sir.
Midwest Boulevard, as far as the increased call in by the police department for the violence and all the other.
Sir, we're getting off into an area we shouldn't be right now because of, because of the Open Meetings Act. That's why we're pulling this, to make sure that we're making the correct decision, and we're studying all the aspects of this, the impact to the area.
I'm just asking if there's ever been a study. The other thing is.
Sir, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Lots of the heavy truck traffic and the street drug.
That's why we're, that's what we're studying. Again, ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you for being here, we're going to go ahead and move into the top of our discussion agenda.
Heather, is City Attorney Wayne, can they speak if they want to stay?
At the public discussion item at the end of the discussion and consideration agenda.
So just so your clear, if you want to speak, you can stay, and at that time, you can speak and address council, but council cannot respond to you.
We do have new business public discussion at the end of today. Okay, with that being said, we'll go in and go to discussion item number one.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question about the pulling up the agenda item?
Sir, I can, I can. Please stick around, I'd be glad to.
Well, it just has to do with the open meetings requirement of having the agenda. I was just wanting to ask how it affects pulling it on agenda.
I'll be glad to explain it to you offline, we're getting into.
Okay, discussion item number one, PC two thousand and eight, public hearing with discussion and consideration of ordinance to pre-district from SPUD simplified plan unit development governed by I-1 light industrial to amended SPUD simplified plan unit development governed by I-1 light industrial district, subject to staff comments for the property addressed at sixteen oh one National Boulevard. Community Development Director Billy Harless.
Thank you, Mr. Line. In two thousand and one, the property was rezoned from I-1 light industrial to SPUD governed by I-1 light industrial district. This was to allow the use of manufactured housing, travel trailer, sales and service along with I-1 uses. The structure is now vacant, and the applicant is requesting to amend this, but to allow the use of commercial marijuana grow. This use is not allowed, this, I'm sorry, this use is now allowed in I-1 district, but it was not a used unit classification when the original SPUD was approved in two thousand and one. When staff drafted the ordinance regarding commercial grow, marijuana grow, rolling and processing, it was decided that the SPUDs and PUDs approved prior to the ordinance would have to be amended in order to allow for new uses. This is predominantly, this is a predominantly industrial area, and the property is buffered from residential area to the north, from the north. Staff and planning commission recommend approval of this request.
Is there anybody from Tumble Star Gymnastics Center here? One of the, one of the issues that came up, that there was a protest on, on the location of this, and it has to do with the buffer zone for the marijuana business. The problem with it is that no matter how we, what our personal views are on the sale or the production of marijuana, the state has, the state legislature has put some significant mechanisms in place that don't necessarily allow us to, even if we wanted to, to forbid this from happening. And they're very, and there's, we deal with OMEG, which is Oklahoma Municipal Assistant Assurance Group, which has the insurance for the city. And I've done some reading through their literature, and they caution cities from taking specific steps to forbid activities such as this, because this is not a retail, this is not, you just can't go in there and buy the marijuana. This is a grow, they're going to deliver it, you just can't, you just don't have a medical license to go in and buy it, is that, is that correct?
Right.
So, there are some buffer zones as it relates to schools and preschools of a thousand feet, but unfortunately, when the statute was written and the unity bill was updated a month or so ago, it didn't allow for municipalities to put restrictions on growers or producers, correct, or processors. So, no matter what your feelings are on the marijuana business, this is an industrial area, which is where we typically would like something like this to be. It's unfortunate that there is a gymnastics center across the field, and, you know, if I was the people there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it next to my business either, but unfortunately, we're kind of handcuffed. The other issue that came up from the people, and I'm speaking from, in their behalf, is that they were worried about the crime. And I asked Chief Claves a month or so ago, when this first came up, to pull the stats of all the locations in Midwest City where we have retail establishments that are selling marijuana, or processors or growers, and the stats show right now that there has been no increase in crime. Is that correct, Chief Claves?
Correct.
But we have the assurance of the police department that if it does come up and there is an increase, there are statutes and there are ordinances that would, if a business becomes a nuisance, there are mechanisms in place where the city can take progressive action against them. Is that, is that correct? Brandon in the city attorney. So, right now, it's unfortunate, but like I said, no matter what your views are on the marijuana, this is zone for what they're wanting to do, and we really don't have much of a choice unless we want to be litigated on it.
I would concur in that OMEG, that's why they have that, those items on there is because they cover our liability insurance, and that's why they have those recommendations.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the side? Hearing none, Chair, entertain a motion.
Don't we need to ask the applicant to come up?
Is the applicant in the house? Do you have anything to say for the council?
No, sir. This won't be a retail business, so again, the secure, we've got sixteen years in security business, that's what we do primary for, for business, and so I can assure you, the property will be just as safe as before as it is now.
You do understand the concerns of the gymnastics people though?
Absolutely, sir.
With that being said, Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, any of you saying aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Extinction.
Thank you for being here, just standing. Yes, sir.
I voted to abstain, you didn't have an extension for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, not my usual routine here. So, we have one extension. Discussion item number two.
PC two thousand and nine, public hearing with discussion and consideration to approve an ordinance to amend the Timber Ridge Plant Unit Development governed by the R-six Single Family Detached Residential District for the property described as part of the southwest quarter of Section Ten Township eleven north, range one west of the Indian Ridge in Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. Mr. Harless.
Thank you, Mr. Line. This amendment is being requested in order to update the allowable exterior materials and to use a model home with an office in place of a garage for home sales. Currently, the PUD does not specifically list the allowable exterior materials for single-family residents. However, it does state that regulations not specifically addressed herein shall comply with zoning ordinances and building regulations of the city of Midwest City, in effect at the time of the approval of this PUD. At the time of the approval in two thousand and seven, the zoning ordinance didn't, not have requirements for exterior materials. However, Section nine dash forty A-one of Building Code stated that each new single-family residential structural shall have a minimum of seventy percent of the exterior wall area, excluding gables, second stories and windows covered with brick or stone. Since that time, the zoning ordinances has been amended to require one-hundred percent masonry materials facing the street, eighty-five percent masonry total, and has identified materials that are considered masonry. The amended PUD is consistent with the current code as of today, with the exception that cedar siding is to be allowed below the plate line. The other amendment is to allow the model home with a garage to be used as sales and office. Once the sales of the new homes within the addition are complete, the office will be converted back to a garage, and upon approved inspections, the home can be occupied for single-family residents. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. Just to address, I do know that there was a number of meetings that went on concerning this, and I believe, I can't speak for all the property owners, but I think that the applicant has been able to appease the neighborhood association and the homeowners association on many of those concerns. Have you had any complaints?
This isn't public discussions, anyone in the audience have anything to say about this particular item? Hearing none, Chair, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, any of you saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. Next item of discussion.
Discussion item three, PC two thousand and ten, discussion and consideration of approval of replat of Lot Five at Block Five of De Pointon City Edition described as part of the northwest quarter of Section Six Township eleven north, range one west, addressed as six oh eight Rose Lawn Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Line. This item is to request the approval of a replat of Lot Five, Block Five, De Pointon City Edition. This would subdivide a single parcel into two individual parcels. Waivers to have street improvements and sidewalks are requested. Staff had the pre-application meeting with the applicant before council suggested discussion of impact fee or fee in lieu of these improvements requiring the improvements regardless of whether or not there is an improved street or sidewalk to be connected. of whether or not there is an improved street or sidewalk to be connected. As this application meets the requirements of subdivision regulations, staff and planning commission recommend approval. Glad to answer any questions.
What's the lot frontage on this?
Fifty foot, about fifty foot each.
I'm sorry?
Approximately fifty feet.
Billy, what's the other lots?
I think we have a mixture of them, can you pull up a? I have a, okay. On the, let me go back to the flat and see what they are next door, should be a, I know there's a mixture of lot sizes within the addition.
There have been several replats in the addition within the last five years.
Is there any further questions or discussion? Chair, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Item four, P C two thousand and eleven, discussion and consideration approval of proposed final plat of the Piper Edition described as a part of southwest quarter of section eight, township eleven north, range one west. Mr. Harless again.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. This item is a request to approve a final plat to subdivide a single parcel into two individual parcels. The preliminary plat was approved in June of two thousand and nineteen. Waivers for public improvements were approved with the preliminary plat, and HOA is not required as there's no amenities, private streets, detention bonds, thoroughfare screening, private parts or floodway within the area requests. As the applicant meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations and is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, staff and planning commission recommend approval. Again, be glad to answer any questions.
Any further discussions or questions? Chair, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item will be item six.
Uh, so you go with item seven. P C two thousand and fourteen, discussion and consideration approval of the replat of lot four, block nine of the Pointon Edition blocks six, seven, eight, nine, and ten described as a part of the northeast quarter of section six, township eleven north, range one west, addressed as one zero nine zero nine Bell B Drive.
Why did we skip six?
We did six. We skipped five.
We skipped five, and we haven't done six.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna back up and try to use.
Okay, for the record, we're going to go back to item six. All right, so we skipped five, there's no action, six. P C two thousand and thirteen, discussion and consideration approval of Midwest City Collision Office Park Final Plat described as part of southwest quarter of section twelve, township eleven north, range two west, located at ninety-two oh nine southeast twenty-ninth. Mr. Harless?
Again, thank you, Mr. Ryan. Uh, this two point five, six acre preliminary plat for the, this development was approved September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. This final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. The only public improvements required with the preliminary plat was for a sidewalk along the frontage of the property. The subdivision regulations require that the improvements be installed prior to the application for a final plat, or the application must, applicant must post a bond for the improvements and install them during construction. The applicant presented staff with a cash bond in July of two thousand and nineteen. City engineers reviewed the engineer's estimate and determined that the amount of the bond was sufficient for the required sidewalk improvements. Sidewalk must be installed during the construction of the building and must be completed and approved prior to the issuance of the C O for the building. Staff recommends approval as well as the planning commission recommends approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
And, and the bond is in lieu of him doing the sidewalk pre-built, right? He's gonna put it in after, which, on Twenty-Ninth Street, that's gonna be significant because it, there, we're building a park right across the street, there's gonna be a lot of foot traffic, and we, we've gotta start putting in sidewalks in places we know there's gonna be people walking.
Yes, sir.
Applicant, uh, is in the house, and Mr. Van Winkle, do you have anything to add to the council?
No, sir.
That being said, any further discussion or questions? Chair, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now we can go to item number seven, Mr. Ryan.
All right, item number seven. P C two thousand and fourteen, discussion and consideration of approval of the replat of lot four, block nine of the Pointon Edition, block six, seven, eight, nine, and ten described as a part of the northeast quarter of section six, township eleven north, range one west, addressed as one zero nine zero nine Bell B Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. This item is a request to approve a replat of lot four, of block nine of the Pointon City Edition, block six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. This would subdivide a single parcel into two individual parcels. Waivers to have street improvements and sidewalks are requested. Staff had the pre-application meeting with the applicant before the council suggested discussion of impact fee and fee in lieu of these improvements, or requiring improvements regardless of whether or not there is an improved street and or sidewalk to be connected to. As the applicant's, application meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations, staff and planning commission recommend approval of the replat. Be glad to answer any questions.
Is there any question, further discussion on this particular item? Hearing none, Chair, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Item eight, P C two thousand and fifteen, discussion and consideration of approval of the Cambry Square, section one preliminary plat described as a part of the southwest quarter of section one, township eleven north, range two west, located at ninety-two oh five southeast fifteen. Mr. Harless?
And again, thank you, Mr. Ryan. This item is in conjunction with the P U D approved under P C sixteen eighty and the amended P U D under P C seventeen fifty-eight. One building was built following approval of the P U D, but the rest of the area has remained undeveloped. The area request has not been platted since the zoning was approved. The applicant has plans to sell the existing building and would like for it to be on its own lot, which is the reason for the application. The applicant plans on developing the remainder of the lot at a later date. Both the proposed lots have access to city water, sanitary sewer, and southeast fifteen. The only required public improvement i- is that it's not currently present is a sidewalk along the frontage. The applicant has requested a waiver to the requirement of the sidewalk. The building on proposed lot two was built in two thousand and nine, and the sidewalk was not required as part of the building permit as it would be today. And there were some questions by some council members as to how this might develop in the future of should this thing be approved, as, as staff and, and planning commission have recommended approval. And at that time, we would require them to either amend the P U D, because the P U D now requires four more lots, five more lots, or they would have to develop to that P U D. So, one way or another, you'll, you will see this agenda item again, or this parcel again as it would come through, 'cause it will be served by that private easement that bisects the property from, from south to north. Be glad to answer any questions.
And since I'm the one that he's talking about asking, this is in my ward, and there's, there's a couple issues, was, is the, the people here that have this property that have requested this?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you come up, please? Tell us your name, please.
Hi, Renee Clark.
And your address?
Ninety-two oh five southeast fifteen.
Okay, I'm sure you're aware there's some concerns about two things over there. One is the water, which, the drainage is, it doesn't necessarily affect your property right now, but there were some people at the planning commission that were, that are concerned about a water issue east of you that may affect them some more.
Well, their property is higher than ours. No, theirs is lower.
Theirs is higher.
Theirs is higher than ours. So, we, ours, we're gonna get their runoff, they're not gonna get ours.
But you're, there's a slope on the west side of your property that's probably two and a half or three foot that...
Yeah, that drains down into the drainage area that has already been engineered.
So, that's, that was one of the concerns, and I think you guys are satisfied with that, that there'd have to be some improvements back there, correct?
Go ahead, Ms. Mc...
Yes, sir, Ms., Mr. Councilman, there was quite a bit of discussion about that and with applicant and any potential landowner and developer. Anything that happens on this property is gonna have to be tied into the storm system that runs along Fifteenth Street. It is there, it's available, and it'll have to be engineered to have no impact on the, any of the adjacent properties.
That was one. The second issue is the, the lack of hat, not having a sidewalk there. And the concern that I've heard from the people that live close over there is that if something is developed that's residential, if, if whoever came in there, developed it and it was an apartment or houses, that there would be no sidewalk for the kids, because that's just, it's not very far from Soldier Creek Elementary. And I was, I raised that today, 'cause it was brought to my attention, and I think, Kelly, if you'll, can explain, or one of y'all explain how that would work, please?
Oh, yes, sir. When I say that, that the council and planning commission will hear something on this again, if it was, if they were to propose an apartment complex, so, so to speak, it would have to come through for zoning. It is not currently zoned for apartment complexes, so they, they can't do that by right. And whatever they do on the remainder of the property, they still have to do a preliminary plat and a final plat, so a lot of these things will be worked out at that, at that point during the, during the process.
And I hate to put you on the spot, but those are the questions that I've got from people that are close by, so I checked on them, and from what they're telling me, both of those concerns have been addressed. So, I didn't want just for you to be standing, what's he talking about, but those were, I was contacted by people that live over there about the water, they say it's gonna be fixed. I was also contacted about the fact that there's no place for, if, if there was a residence built back there, apartments, more than one house, there's not a sidewalk towards the school. They said that can be addressed.
Okay. And if we had to put a sidewalk across there, when we develop that other building, that other lot, it would be demolished?
We're not asking you to do it now.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just stating that.
Saying if, if, if it was developed a year or two from now with an apartment or residences, I think that's when the requirement would be...
I don't know where that came from, but it's not, I couldn't, I couldn't put apartments back there.
You know, you can't let the facts get in the way of a good story, so that's why we found that out, so that's when, when, when people call us...
I understand.
We, we're, we're supposed to check into it, and that's what I did.
Okay, I understand. Okay.
And we'll tie up a lot of those loose ends as you move forward with the development.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else?
Is there anybody that's here to protest against this development?
Patrick in.
Patrick? So, I'm hearing that all the drainage will get to Fifteenth Street, not to the west property?
Yes, sir, when they develop this in the back, there's enough fall from the north to the south that whatever system that's put in, as it develops, it'll capture that and will take it to the south, so it won't be running overland towards the school and towards the long area anymore.
But the, the slope is pretty high, the property to the west, I, I don't recall, it's eight or ten feet, but you plan on getting all that water to the street with that high of elevation, it seems?
Yeah, I understand your concern, and yes, we, we looked into that, and there's enough fall, right now, you're correct, it does fall to the west, but as this develops, it'll create the opportunity to capture all that water that's back there in the corner and bring it to the south to the road. So, all in all, we would hope we'd have a, a good development, and also, we would have a, a new system that would capture water and get it off, off the surface.
Yeah, but we don't know when we're developing it, it could be a year, it could be ten years, so, don't know.
Any further discussion or questions?
Can I ask a question? Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, you can come to the podium and...
I can make, I can, myself, yeah, I can, myself. I'm Fern Miracle. I'm ninety-five years old, you have to wait for me to stumble. I was wondering about Fairchild. Fairchild has drainage on their street, but so many people mow the grass just over the curb and never takes it up, cleans it up, or nothing else. How can we get rid of that?
Um, Ms. Miracle, uh...
I live on a slope, it goes down the hill.
Yes, ma'am.
And it stops, backs up to our house.
Can, uh, can we, can we come over to your house and discuss this with you? I know where you live, and, and, and try to come up with a solution.
Thank you.
This is, this is kind of, uh, outside the, what we're discussing right now.
All right, thank you.
The young man right to your right will visit with you about that.
If we can, I'll get your permission and I'll contact you, I'll send someone over, all right? Let's have a seat.
All right, thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, is there any further discussion on this particular item? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Item nine, P C two thousand and sixteen, discussion and consideration approval of proposed, proposed preliminary plat of Mary Nolan Estate described as part of the southwest quarter of section eight, township eleven north, range one west, addressed as twenty-five hundred Hand Road. This is the one that, yeah, we need to table this to the next meeting, the applicant.
Table it or not take any action?
Then table. It'll be on the next, next, uh, council agenda if we table it. That's, that was a request from the applicant.
Make a motion, second.
Got a motion and a second, table, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, and we table it for the next, uh, next item.
Item ten, T S four thirty-seven, discussion and consideration of changing the intersection of Austrian Pine Drive, White Bud Place, Red Oak Drive from two-way yield to a four-way stop. Mr. Minifee, City Engineer.
Uh, thank you, sir. The applicant petitioned the Traffic and Safety Commission to upgrade the signage at this intersection. Uh, currently, there's two yield signs and two through lanes with no signage. The HOA and the applicant are asking to upgrade that to a four-way stop. Uh, the applicant has petitioned, Mr. DeValchio, and has sixty-four signatures from the HOA as well with her application. The Traffic Commission recommends approval, and so does staff.
Any questions, Ms. Minifee? Chair, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
I say.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Item eleven, T S four thirty-eight, discussion and consideration of adding additional stop controls to the intersections of Viewpoint Drive, West Deeply Drive, and Viewpoint Drive, Havenwood Drive. Once again, Mr. Minifee.
Thank you, the applicant petitioned the Traffic Commission for Viewpoint Drive. Currently, it is a through street, and with the curvature and the excessive on-street parking, the lines of sight through that area made traffic and travel di- difficult. They're asking to add signage at those two intersections to make them three-way stops. Uh, the applicant's petition is in the, the item, and ha, and the applicant has thirty-one signatures...
Uh, the applicant's petition is in the, the item, and ha, and the applicant has thirty-one signatures of support. And traffic commission recommends approval, and so does staff.
Any questions? Chair, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, you can sing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Next item?
TS four thirty-nine, thanks city attorney. Discussion, consideration of recommending that the city pursue traffic calming measures on Murray Drive. Patrick.
The applicant, Mr. Missouri, came in with petition with concerns of the speed and the, the traffic along Murray Drive, just west of Monrooney. He's turned in a petition with sixteen of his neighbors' signature on it. Uh, this item is more of a, what I would ask, permission to pursue some different opportunities to, to install something in the public right-of-way to help with, uh, speed. There's a couple of photo exhibits in the packet, but that's not necessarily what we'll pursue. We wanna try to put something in beside stop signs to see if we can help calm the traffic, but without having excessive three- and four-way stops. Uh, the traffic commission and the applicant, uh, were in agreement, and, uh, staff recommended approval.
Just what, Patrick? Maybe you'll connect something that's a design like what was put on Key, or?
Not necessarily. I think we wanna do something that has more of a vertical element to it. Uh, as you can see in the pictures, there's some temporary things that have been set up, like traffic circles with hay bales and et cetera. Uh, we'd like to do something that's a little more appealing than that and see what the public reaction is to them, um, and the council's reaction, and hopefully, uh, get a positive feedback and something that we can pursue.
Maybe something we could do, a couple of proposals back and bring back through the traffic and safety, and then back through the council for approval.
I have a couple of questions if Ms. Eads was done.
I just wanted to clarify, Billy, I think you just clarified it for me, so the idea will be to come up with whatever the design is, Patrick, Billy, that you think would be best to go forward with, and then it will come back for us at a later date, is that correct?
Yes, there's some, it's called traffic calming techniques, and there's several that are out there. And with it being so close to the school and stuff, that there's some opportunities here to explore. Uh, we've not done a whole lot of that in the city, uh, but it's widely used in other parts of the country and other parts of the state. So, yeah, I think this is a good opportunity to, to bounce them off the traffic and safety commission and also you all, and, and see if we can come up with something that'll work.
Got a question. I, I like roundabouts a lot. A couple of questions. To make the roundabouts, are you gonna have to take the easement that we have from those yards and, and move the curbs back, which is gonna further push the easements back onto these people's properties, one, and two? Where twenty-five, twenty-eight is, is that where the buses still go into Monrooney? Because is a bus gonna be able to navigate a little bit around about to get into the schools?
And to answer your question, yes. Uh, what, what we wanna do is look at different options. Right now, they'll be modest in size. Uh, we will make sure that the travel lanes for buses and emergency vehicles are wide enough that they don't impede them from moving through that area. It's more to help with a visual component, to help slow people down. Uh, and part two, or your first part of your question, as far as the curbing on those corners, again, these will be small enough that there won't be any adjustment to the existing roadway. They will simply be in the intersections, and hopefully will help slow and calm down traffic.
Okay. I've got a couple of things to add to that, too. I've talked to the people over there about this, and, and the concern, again, has a lot, and I'm sure they expressed it to y'all, has to do with the kids that are walking to school, and there's gonna be more kids walking to school once that becomes a bigger feeder school. I understand, and you report, and I, articles didn't come through, but I found them on the internet where it says stop signs don't necessarily slow people down. It makes them go faster to the next stop sign. I understand that. Stop signs are a whole lot quicker to get them put up, and they're a whole lot cheaper to get put up than the calming, based off of what you guys are gonna try to do, and I understand it, and I have an issue with it. What's the timeline, and do we have the funds to even do it?
Well, that, that's some of the things we'll have to pursue, and we'll have to bring, uh, back to the council. Uh, again, we just wanted to, to get this in front of you, uh, to get some affirmation that we can pursue these different courses of action. There, there may not be a, a fiscal possibility, but I think there's some definite things that could happen in here that would be at a modest cost, that we hope that would have a, an impact, and would help with the, the students walking to and from school.
So fiscally, we can't do this, for whatever reason, will it come back to us for the possibility of maybe putting at least one stop sign up?
Yeah, we'll bring it back with you, some, uh, solution one way or another. Uh, we often refer to traffic circles as, because that's an obvious one that a lot of people use. But, uh, there's also choking down the, the corner a little bit where the, and the reason I like it here is because it is so close to the school, where you introduce the person to the crosswalk, um, out in a protected area, and do the crosswalk where the traffic has to slow down for them to, to, to cross it. Similar to what we've done down in town center there, uh, and the, the, the crosswalks are fairly close. So something like that may also work there, too. And Patrick, I, I know this isn't on an arterial, but is there, you know, if there's ACOG funds available to do this, maybe long-term, some safety money out there?
There's always the possibility of that. Uh, there's nothing that's, you know, immediately available. But, you know, the intent is hopefully that we can bring some good ideas to you and implement them, uh, build some positive momentum, and we can start, you know, using these controls around town.
So is our prudent plan to take no action on this, and then let it come back in a set period of time? We can revisit it after you have a chance to consider the options?
Yeah, I think that's the best way.
So... Can I, can I explain something very cheap to do that'll work?
Mary, you can come to the podium and address this, I'll just say your name and the, uh, hand address.
Sure.
Um, my name is Sandy Boyle. I'm in the Ridgecrest area, two zero one Orchard Drive. Um, just give you a quick solution. I was stationed in England, and you're absolutely correct. Roundabouts are the bomb, but you need speed and you need width. I think the solution won't cost a dime. If you cut strips, you ever go right up before a, uh, uh, toll road and vzzzz, vzzzz, and they cut those strips in the road, and it shocks you? Just paint them, cut the grooves out, and you're done. It won't cost you a dime labor for the day. Just a suggestion.
Well, and painting and striping is also another option that we'll probably pursue, uh, but, again, we don't wanna be rash.
Let's do pursue roundabouts where they actually make sense. If you can make it here, great, but in, in larger areas, they do move traffic so much quicker than just about anything else.
If there's no further discussion, I may have to take no action on the item and let it pass for a period of, whenever staff has determined it's appropriate to bring it back?
Thank you, thank you.
Any further discussion?
So do we have to have a vote to take no action?
No, we're not taking any action on this. I think the only movement I had to, to approve, uh, looking at this.
Yeah, we're not taking any action, so, um, we're gonna, we don't have a set time to bring it back, so, yeah, we'll just take no action.
Take no action. Next item, any discussion?
Item thirteen, TS four forty, discussion, consideration, supporting a change to the traffic pattern at the intersection northeast twenty-third and Midwest Boulevard. Patrick.
The speed limit along northeast twenty-third and Midwest Boulevard at this intersection is forty-five miles per hour. Midwest City Police Department has reported three crashes at this intersection in the past three years, and there's also been a recent fatality, unfortunately, at this intersection. Uh, city staff has received numerous complaints regarding this intersection, and it's, uh, less than optimal turning movements and pass-through through the intersection. Now, after the complaints received, staff examined the intersection and determined that the likely problem is that the, the left turn lanes at Midwest Boulevard can be obstructed. When opposing directions, or when opposing direction has a vehicle trying to make a left turn, opposing vehicle, usually a truck, obscures vehicles' line of sight, which may be just trying to drive through. Additionally, the staff has referred this intersection to ODOT since northeast twenty-third falls under their jurisdiction. Even though the problem's identified, identified, the intersection is constrained by utilities, and the fact that ODOT and the city of Spencer would have to be involved with any solution. After discussion with the city's signal contractor, proposals being made to eliminate one of the through lanes through Midwest Boulevard and convert them into a protective left turn. This will allow for the least amount of interruption to the signal timing. Although the solution may not have prevented the fatal crash on July, it'll allow the city to further protect the left turn movement. Staff has discussed this with, uh, Public Works and City of Spencer, and, uh, with the traffic commission recommends approval.
So, so what exactly are they, excuse me, what exactly are you going to do? I mean, there's traffic lights there, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when someone is, what, heading, coming from the south and making a left turn, is that correct, or what?
Right. Right now, when you, either way, if you're going le, or north or south, right now, the left turn bay doesn't have a arrow. It just has a, a passive left turn green light. And a lot of times when people are turning through there, they can't see behind all the truck traffic and turn in front of traffic that's going straight through the intersection. So what we would like to do is look at adjusting the, the signal so that there's a protected left turn, and it would help get people through the intersection without the risk of the cross traffic hitting them.
Oh. And you said there's been a lot of incidents, uh, there at twenty-third and Midwest Boulevard?
Yes, uh, for our city, yes, there has been.
Oh, okay.
Vaughn, do you wanna address this? I think you're the applicant, Public Works. And while Vaughn's coming up, I will tell the council this is something that is not budgeted, so we'll have to, we don't know if there's any other nominee available, but it'll be something that'll have to be, depending on the cost, we'll have to put it in the budget or supplement this year.
Mayor and council, this, uh, item became an issue. As, as Mr. Menifee stated, while I was still Public Works Director, uh, I had worked on multiple occasions, uh, with some of the businesses in the area. Uh, in particular, the bank president there on the, I forget the name of the bank, but they're on the northwest, or the northeast corner. And that, they have, not only their staff has been involved in near misses there, they have witnessed many near misses as, as well as the accidents that PD has reported to the engineering staff. Um, I had, uh, after the fatality occurred a couple, uh, three or four months ago, I asked engineering staff to revisit this item and, and visit with our signal contractor to determine if there is some solution that could be, um, affordably executed uh, without any major, um, reconfiguration of the roadway. Uh, because this is a state highway, and there's not an abundance of right-of-way there, and there's not an abundance of, uh, financial resources to modify the intersection. I think our signal contractor came up with, working with the engineers, uh, for a very affordable solution. So, uh, it would be, as your former Public Works Director and now your assistant city manager, something that I would strongly recommend, and your engineering staff, uh, is recommending this modification as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, I got something to say. I just asked, I'm sorry. So I just asked Heather, and I think we knew we need to find the money, because we've identified that this is a potential issue. She says under the tort claim act, if we've identified it, and so we come back, and we don't have the money for it, and we just don't do anything, we could be on a total of one hundred and twenty-five grand in the tort claims act. So, and we also, I think, have a, if we've identified an issue where somebody just recently died, this is a not, can, do we have the money? It's at this point, I think, we need to find the money.
Point taken. Uh, you had a estimate, the cost of it.
Do we do, you do, we do, sir. I, I don't recall the number. Patrick, do you remember?
No, I don't remember the, the official cost on the estimate. I don't wanna say it into the record, but, uh, there's some affordable things that we can do immediately, and some more long-term solutions that we can look into as well.
This law to be approved by Spencer as well, since that one of your intersection.
I don't wanna go on record.
They don't approve it, and we do. They, they, they take the tort.
And again...
I'm trying to make sure, as we've identified, and I'm not trying to make anybody's life more difficult, maybe Spencer's. Uh, as we've identified something, we, even if it was fifty dollars or five million, we've identified a dangerous thing. But if Spencer comes up and now says, "Hey, great idea, Midwest City, but we're not doing it." If we've tried, we've put the money out, and Spencer says no, do they get all, all the risk, and we get none of the risk because they're the ones that blocked this action?
That would depend on how the court rolls.
Okay. Would that be our argument?
Grave attorney answer.
That that would likely be our defense.
Every single, every single answer I give in the world of taxes is, the very first part is, "It depends." It's as good as a legal answer there.
You, you're saying we identified a duty and a responsibility to act, and we failed to act. How do you think that's gonna end up?
No, no, that's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying.
That's what I'm asking you. I'm asking you, what do you think?
We'd get sued. But my, my comment is, if, if Spencer says no, you can't do our half of the street, do they have the...
I understand what your concern is, and I'm not gonna answer from a legal perspective, since I'm sitting here as a council member, but I'm basically trying to question it back to you. You've identified a duty, and you failed to act. What do you think's gonna happen?
Well, I don't know if we took a vote to approve it, and we had the money, if we failed to act, if we're not able to do it because another city bars us. We haven't failed to act, I don't...
Patrick just said that there are basically economical items that can be implemented, so there is something that we can do. We obviously need Spencer's consent to be able to do them. They have that in the intersection, but, I mean, if we've identified an economical solution, and we don't do it at this point...
I think we're both saying the same thing. That's, that was my whole point, is we, I don't think we have a choice but to do this unless another municipality blocks it.
But I thought you mentioned that, um, that Spencer, you had talked with them, and they, did you have a talk with Spencer?
Yeah, they're, uh, very, uh, willing to cooperate with us. Uh, once we have prices and, and some figures in front of them, that we'll have to make sure that, uh, they're ready to proceed.
I don't recall, Ms. Allen, that the exact estimate that the signal contractor had given us, but I do recall being surprised at the affordability and the simplicity of this solution, and being able to control those left-hand turn movements. Uh, you have a lot of truck traffic going to the, uh, construction debris landfill there in Spencer, on the north side of twenty-third. Uh, keep in mind, Mr. Mayor, this is Midwest City's signal. We own the signal, uh, and we maintain the signal. So that really, the only thing that the city of Spencer's involvement would be to bless off on this, more or less in writing, uh, and then, uh, paint some arrows on that center lane to control the left-hand turn movement on that inside lane. Um, I, I, I'll just go ahead and editorialize here on the, on the record that, uh, the cost of that is minimal if it were to save a life. Uh, and, uh, it's like anything else, once we get the pricing. Uh, if it's a, if we feel like it's a high enough priority to bring it to you in, in a budgetary form, if we can't find the appropriation within our operating budget for this year, uh, we'll ratchet that up and bring it to you, uh, as a high priority for twenty-one, for twenty-twenty-one, okay?
If we could do a supplement to the budget if we needed to.
Correct.
I, I'm just speaking for myself, but if you find out that you don't have it in the budget, I would prefer to go up to twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you.
We, 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 we will look at that, sir. Yes, sir.
Any further discussion or questions? Uh, all in favor? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Uh, the second?
Um, second.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm in motion and a second. All in favor, you can sing aye. Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Next item?
Item fourteen, TS four forty-one, discussion, consideration, request for additional stop controls at the intersections of North Marshall Drive and East Kitty Hawk Drive, and East Rickenbacker Drive, and East Harmon Drive. Patrick.
Uh, this request, um, comes from Ward one, Councilwoman Eads. Um, on behalf of the HOA and the local residents in this area, uh, these two intersections right now are, are two-way stops with two through streets. Um, the request is to make them four-way stops. The Traffic and Safety Commission voted to recommend stop signs at Rickenbacker and East Harmon, and then had... East Harmon and then ask for further study on the other intersection and have the item come back to them at a later time. Staff recommends approval of both intersections.
I'm asking for approval for both intersections, the one in particular at Kitty Hawk and Marshall. That was studied previously because it came up as a previous request by constituent and it showed at that time previously that the number of incidents, accidents that occurred at that intersection would justify implementation of a four-way stop there. So I'm a little confused by the Traffic and Safety Commission's considerations or concerns this time around, but it, I don't think it actually went to Traffic and Safety last time, I think it was just studied to be put in place. I also want to remind everyone that there's a thoroughfare through there that affects both elementary school kids and middle school kids. One further comment on this, that as of this week, the southwest corner of that intersection at Kitty Hawk and Marshall, there's been a driveway put into the residence that sits on the southwest corner, and the driveway is very proximate to the fire hydrant on the corner, as well as the stop sign on the corner. And I don't know if that driveway was approved or not approved, but if we're going to put stop signs out there, the other issue is the signage right there where the stop sign is and the street sign is. The street sign has been kind of at a, about a 40-degree angle for some time because it was hit at some point, so I would ask if we have crews go out there to install stop signs, if we might also have them correct the street sign issue while they're there. And it may require looking because the dirt work has been removed around the fire hydrant and up to where the current stop sign is on Kitty Hawk from the installation of the driveway, so.
We'll take a look at that.
But I would ask for council's blessing on these two changes.
Motion to approve?
Are we voting on all four or just two in the Traffic Commission?
It's up to the council, it's your discretion.
I'm asking for both intersections.
So it's four, two or four?
Well, for both the intersections at Kitty Hawk and Marshall and also at Rickenbacker and East Harmon.
So four new stop signs, two.
But there's.
Kitty Hawk and Marshall already has two of these ways that run east-west, but they don't have ones that run north and south. And the other intersection, I believe, will need all four of them installed, so six total stop signs essentially for two intersections.
Will she make the motion?
So I'm going to let Susan make, you can make this motion, can't you?
That's what I was doing, such.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
Can I speak, please?
Yes, ma'am. Please approach the podium in the station and address.
Molly Morrell, I live at 313 East Kitty Hawk Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
She is absolutely right. A hundred children walk down that street from school. They come from the high school down Marshall. Marshall comes straight right there at Felix and Marshall. They come zooming through there. It is dangerous and it's dangerous at Jacobs, and they have come from Jarman, which I know Jarman's going to go away, but we are talking upwards of 200 children walking through that area. I stopped continually on Marshall and let them just speed through on Kitty Hawk. We need a higher police presence there. The other morning, the police were stopping them and they need to stop them in the evening. It is out of control and those stop signs are needed because we are talking about children and high school kids, and I literally, I mean, 200 children walking, and that's not a small number.
Ma'am, have you called the police department and asked for increased patrols in that area over?
I have before, yes, but you know, it's not every morning.
Yeah, but if you see it, if you see it, I guarantee you, because I know Brandon, I know his department, if you call them and you say that these, you say what you said to us, they will have increased patrols out there.
There be, there does need to be a higher police presence there, going to school, coming from school, and not just that, fighting, fighting with the children from the high school and the junior high, it needs to stop.
I'll make a personal note, this is an email to the chief, request an issue patrol over there, increase our presence, and I agree with you all.
Hey, Brandon, hi, would you do extra patrols over there? We don't need to send an email.
I'll officially do it by method of email.
And it is, there's a lot of children, she's absolutely right.
I agree with that, so.
In fairness, and ma'am, I don't know if you're out there in the evening, but we've had a lot of police presence recently going up and down Kitty Hawk.
I watch them on my cameras.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm famous for my cameras.
I would thank the.
I police the streets.
Thank you, ma'am. So, we have a motion to approve all four, instead of just two?
Yes, to clarify. Yes, to clarify, I'm asking to move to approve the stop signs to be implemented at both intersections.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the same line.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next item.
Okay, these next items are from the Ordinance Review Committee, recommendations from the Ordinance Review Committee, so we'll have several there, but we'll start with item 15, discussion, consideration of passing, approving the ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, Section 211, upon regular meetings of council, providing for repealer and severability. Mayor, you want to hand the letter, Sarah?
Ms. Sarah.
You requested they only have one council meeting in July, and that being the second Tuesday in July, so that's what this ordinance would do. Well, it already was December, already has one.
Fourth Tuesday in July, or the second Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday.
Oh, sorry, fourth.
Fourth Tuesday in July, that's correct.
Due to vacations and everything, I think this would give us a break. This is by my request, so these questions can be corrected.
And then, what was that, for December 1? Did you say?
I have one in December and June, or July.
Yeah, I thought we did one in December. Second?
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the same line.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next item.
Item 16, discussion, consideration of approving an ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 20, Housing Code, Article 1, Existing Structures, Section 20-2, Code amended, establishing effective date and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Stroh.
These changes are where we have done adoptions to the International Property Maintenance Book that we have adopted in its entirety, and it is to clear up verbiage, to make the current International Property Maintenance Code the same as we're doing. I don't know if I said that clearly.
That's the short answer.
Yeah.
If there's any questions, Mike or members of the committee.
This has been approved by our official by the Ordinance Review Committee, any questions or comments? Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the same line.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next item.
Item 17, discussion, consideration of approving an ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 28, Offenses Miscellaneous, Article 2, Offenses Against Morals, Section 28-22, Indecent Exposure, Section 28-28, Urination in Public and Providing for Repealer and Severability and Establishing Effective Date, Chief Glabes.
If you've got it, if you've got your butt kind of hanging out because you've got one of those thongs on in the pool, is that considered in this? I am not wearing a thong, but I understand Matt does. But anyway, I'm, I'm, literally, are people who are swimming that have a thong, are they breaking the law in this with the way it reads?
You're asking the wrong person, Sean, I don't go to pools, so.
No, I'm serious, because that's how people, they have bathing suits that don't cover their entire cleft of their rear, which I'm not even sure what that is, that, are we causing it to where if somebody wants to complain about a, somebody that's in the pool that has a tinier bathing suit than they like, that all of a sudden our cops are going to get involved?
Well, those types of cases are usually handled on a complaint basis and the investigating officer would have to go out and determine whether it was a violation of the ordinance.
Yeah, so at Falls Creek, we had to carry a dollar with us to show us the knee from here. How do you determine? We had, there was a Supreme Court Justice that did, when it came to certain things about specifically pornography, said, I would know it when I see it. So, we have something here that is left up to the discretion of 98 of our cops, which they usually have good discretion, but one's going to say this much, one's going to say this much. This is a very open, ambiguous thing that I, Daisy Dukes? I mean, are we, are we talking about stuff like that, that you see in the public all the time and we're now, we've seen them, how people are going to dress?
That, that would not expose the cleft and, I think, well, I think the chief will back me up on this, that most of the incidents regarding indecent exposure and urinating in public are citizen complaints. They are not usually actions that the police themselves see they're responding to somebody who wants to sign a complaint. This change was initiated by a specific case where someone was urinating on their porch, which was not deemed a public place by the judge, and the mother whose 13-year-old daughter saw it was offended that it was kicked out. So we were responding to a citizen complaint case.
I'm fine with the public urination part, but the buttocks seems a little bit open for interpretation.
So, and, you know, just to say, mentioning what you mentioned, what you said, that if someone complains about someone being indecent, if someone wore a Daisy Dukes and they say they, that's indecent or, so, well.
Well, and again, just because you're charged doesn't mean you're convicted, so it may certainly.
But again, we're leaving this up for quite a lot of discretion from, and you probably have 10 different officers that could look at 10 different claps of the rear, and four would say that's not, three would say that's maybe, and three would say, yeah, that probably is, because it's open to interpretation.
This is current, I mean, the language as you're looking at 28.
I understand it's current, this is, we're talking about this, I just think that that portion of it leaves way too much, I understand public urination, you should go to jail and you should, you should have all kinds of stuff. I just have some issues with something that's so far up, especially with what's kind of considered acceptable code these days.
Well, and that, the part that is not in red, the item that, or the portion that you're discussing that's defining indecent exposure rather than what is a public place, that's what we changed. That, and Chief Glabes can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is from the state statute, the criminal state statute, so we are simply.
Or black is the criminal state statute?
Right, right, that we have just incorporated into our ordinance. We've just changed the definition of public place.
And most of these complaints are handled on a complaint basis, and usually in these cases, the officer will do the report, have somebody sign the complaint, and go it to the judge, nobody gets everyone to jail. Unless it's egregious, I mean, if somebody drops a divorce in the middle of a crisis, then that's obviously going to be an arrestable offense, but something that's iffy, then the officer just is going to take the complaint and send it to the judge for his determination.
Well, if you want to say indecency exposure, you probably see a lot of that every day, you know, sometimes people have their chest more than what you think. Some people would say that's indecent.
I think to help you, Mr. Reed, is the intent of the change in this ordinance is reference what Ms. Poole said, the public place. We had a couple of issues, someone nude inside their home that you can see from the street, and then the other issue that Ms. Poole brought up, so we're trying to eliminate those infractions. But certainly, this has gone through the Subcommittee on the Ordinances, they've reviewed it, it's been brought to the council, it's your pleasure, whatever, however you want to deal with it.
Did you say, let me hear you correctly, did you say that someone saw someone in their home that was, and they was nude, and they said indecency during their home, inside their home?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think what he says is they were exposed, they could see themselves through the window.
Through the windows?
Yeah. And they were exposing themselves that way, and that's.
Well, yes.
But you're not supposed to be looking in your neighbor's window.
You don't have to take the record.
Oh, my God.
Any further discussion?
That's called being a peepcom.
May I to approve?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'm almost afraid to ask. All in favor, indicate the same line.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next item for discussion.
Item 18, discussion, consideration to approve an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 42, Trees, Article 1, In General, Section 4213. Application Procedures, Section 4214, Planting Trees or Shrubs Within the Public Right-of-Way Removal or Relocation Fees, Article 3, Tree Treming, etc., Section 4249, Tremming Clearance, Section 4250, Dead or Disease Tree Removal Within the Right-of-Way, Section 4251, Notice to the Owner, 4252, Hearing, Section 4253, Cost to be Determined, Statement of Cost to be Sent, Section 4254, Failure to Pay Cost to be Certified to the County Treasurer, Placing Section 4255 and 4256 in Reserve, Establishing an Effective Date and Providing for Repealer and Severability. Mr. Stroh.
Yes, sir. This is pretty much a 100% rewrite of this chapter. We had a lot of outdated things in there as to notice and all was sent by tree board, we've cleaned that up. We've tried to make this as our normal procedure is today, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you address the height?
Yes, the current code states 12 feet above street. We are asking it to go to 14 feet above the street due to trash trucks and ladder trucks for the fire department. We are also adding a part in there, eight foot above a sidewalk. We have complaints about people not being able to ride down a sidewalk or even walk, and we didn't have anything other than relying on the 12-foot street right-of-way. We do have ADA, but our ADA left some gray area and that will be coming in a future update to you all.
And just to try and make everybody, all three of them listening at home, and you guys out here, we don't just instantly start going out and giving citations, you're not at 14 feet or you're not eight foot above. Our code enforcement are very good about, to begin with, informing people of violation.
Code enforcement is supposed to be proactive, but no, we get a list, a lot of times, from the bus drivers, from Mendel Schools on trees, any code violation they work, they're supposed to work that 100 block. So if they've got to complain or not, and they're working a violation in 100 block in North Midwest Boulevard, we should be working the entire 100 block.
But they're good at working with the citizens, this is a new law that's gone in and.
Oh, absolutely, we'll give education, time period.
We're giving you time to get this and explaining why.
Absolutely.
I just didn't want people to think that as soon as we pass this, they need to trim their trees and.
We'll be back next week to get you again, because it's currently at 12, no.
The same methods are going to use, you're given notice, you have 10 days to obey, and then we go back and visit.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Chair, entertain a motion.
May I to approve? Point of personal privilege, can we turn the thermostat up a little bit, please?
I don't know if this would work. I think, really, if you do this in your office or something, it should know everything.
I've got a motion and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the same line.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Next item.
I'd like to thank staff for all the work they've been doing on these ordinances. It's a lot of writing and the Ordinance Review Committee is doing a great job, so I, this is a, this process is working well. We'll be coming, we'll be bringing more ordinances, I think, with, we'll be early, sometime in October, we'll be bringing, we'll be working on some much more difficult ordinances. Anyway, good job, staff and Ordinance Review Committee. Item 19. Item nineteen, discussion, consideration, replacement of Brian Enzie from the original mile reinvestment committee. Brian's moved out of the original mile.
Unfortunately, Brian and Annie and family left the original mile area, and so I support him withdrawing, being removed from the original mile reinvestment committee, and I would nominate Kim McNeer if she wants to accept, and it's approved by council to the original mile reinvestment committee.
You see her?
She's standing right, well, she's sitting right there in red.
Oh, okay.
It, it's, issues go before the committee about the original mile neighborhood. It meets infrequently, so it won't be burdensome. It's not a regularly scheduled meeting. The next meeting was tentatively scheduled for November. So, we might have four meetings a year at best. It's not gonna be a big-time commitment, Kim, but if you're willing, I think you have a dedication to the neighborhood. I think it would be great for you to serve. She accepts.
You are agreeing to accept. We have a nomination. I'll take that as a motion.
Right. It's a double motion to approve.
It's a double motion to approve Brian Enzie's withdrawal from the original mile reinvestment committee and to appoint Kim McNeer to take his remaining term.
Susan, it's McNew.
McNew, I'm sorry. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate a single aye. Opposed? Abstention. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Purpose of public discussion sections for agenda, of the agendas for members of the public speaking council. I would do want to remind you, since there are no agenda items, we would ask that you come to the podium, say your name and address, and please be advised that we cannot engage into a one-on-one conversation with you, because there are no agenda items that are being discussed. With that being said, is there anyone that has anything written before the council? Yes, ma'am.
I'm back. I lasted. Again, my name is Sandy Boyle, and even though I'm in Ridgecrest, North Ridgecrest, I am absolutely, fully understanding mechanically that there is no gear more important, sorry, no tooth more important in a gear. They all work together to turn. I am a total advocate that a city has to remain solvent. A city has to continue moving forward, has to get new business, pull in tax dollars, whatever the case. I'm wearing a shirt deliberate today. I don't know if you could see it. Pig flying, and at the bottom it says, "Believe." Believe me, this shirt is deliberate. There is no thing that is not accomplishable. I have multiple sclerosis. Three years ago, I wasn't walking. I had a cane if I did, and I had a wa- I'm a bow wave, and I believe that the OM is completely justified in the infliction of a series of obolus in front of them to taint their view and, and all of that. I'm not opposed to apartments. What I'm opposed to, being next in line. I'm two neighborhoods up. So, whatever's happening there, down the road, it's happening potentially to me. I'm already inundated with ten street apartments. Today, I drove down Air Depot, and it's apartments dilapidated. I drove all around the city today. And guess where there's no apartments? I just think this is solvable. You should get what you want, get what you need. All the parameters we talked about at the breakfast, oh, sorry, at the coffee, location, location. Douglas Boulevard has no apartments. There's multiple properties for sale. You don't need a hundred of those gross buildings that are depicted, square boxes. You don't need a hundred of those in a row. Believe me, I'm from Chicago. I know what Cabrini-Green is. I've seen it, and I accidentally walked in front of it. Trust me. Everything is solvable. The bow wave is necessary, and have what you want. Have the business for the city to get the tax revenue and all of those things. Nobody's opposed to that. Nobody's opposed, that I'm aware of, that Twenty-Ninth Street Development is exceptional for the city. The only circumstance that is happening right now is the origins of this city are being inflicted inside their neighborhood, unlike anywhere else in Midwest City. It's, it's a double negative. So, don't let the cement dry. Please. Get what you want, just location, location, location. Okay? That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to bring to your attention the concerns of the people in the original mile.
Can you speak into my-
Oh, Kim, oh, sorry.
And please state your name and address.
Kim McNew, two oh four East Jacobs Drive. Oh, it does, thank you. Okay, I want to bring to your attention the concerns of the people in the original mile, so that you can think about these things over the next four months. The project is not providing enough parking, and the, if the project is to go through, there will be parking up and down both sides of the street. Exhibit BM says parking spaces are limited to no more than thirty-five spaces on site. There are thirty-four apartment units, thirty-one bedroom units, and four two-bedroom units. According to the city ordinance, the minimum amount of parking for the apartment unit should be one and a half spaces per one-bedroom unit and two parking spaces per two-bedroom apartment units, which is a minimum of fifty-seven spaces for the apartment units only. At the Neighborhood Association meeting on August nineteenth, I asked you, and you confirmed to me that there is a minimum code requirement for retail and commercial parking. And I believe that retail sites also require to have handicap parking spaces. So, when you add whatever that parking is needed to the retail sites, the actual minimum parking is more than fifty-seven spaces. We already have parking in the streets, and more parking in the street occurs in front of our homes on football game nights. This was actually last Friday night. This is Kitty Hawk facing west. Whoops, sorry. This is Kitty Hawk facing east. This is what we put up with on game nights. And this is Jacobs. So, there's lots of parking and traffic on game nights, and this is gonna be our reality every day with the way the project is. Kitty Hawk is also the main street. Our kids walk and ride their bikes down to go to school. There are no sidewalks, plus the traffic that occurs down Kitty Hawk during times of dropping off and picking up the students. And I asked another question to you at that association meeting, and I wanna ask it again. Why do you feel this project is a good idea when there is clearly not enough parking, and it's gonna increase traffic? When I was knocking on doors, I had people tell me, when they were updating their homes, that they had to keep the outside of their homes original to that of the original mile. I was told from others that they could not rebuild their garages back on the original slab because the city code had changed, and the old cane, the old code had not been grandfathered in. And so, now, if you drive around the original mile, you will see garage, driveways that do not, their garages are offset. So, if Jeff Johnson is allowed to build this apartment project, he will be given a variance on parking. He will be given a variance to allow street parking. The code says, "No portion of any required off-street space shall be, shall occupy or use any public street right-of-way." He's asking for eleven on-street parking spaces, a variance on the fire lanes. Code requires a fire lane to be a minimum of twenty-six feet. He's asking for twenty-two to twenty-four. He's asking for a variance on landscaping, a variance on setbacks. Code requires twenty-five feet front building line along Kitty Hawk and Jacobs, and seven feet on east side. He's asking for ten feet on Kitty Hawk and only two and a half feet setback along Jacobs, six feet on the east side. He's asking for a variance on height. The code says, "Height shall not exceed thirty-five feet." He's requesting forty-five feet. And I understand that Jeff Johnson is a businessman, and he's just doing what he does. But my question is, why is the ci- city willing to give Jeff Johnson so many variances and not follow city code? It's clear that the residents have to follow the code, but why does Jeff Johnson get special privileges? Regarding the bar, there is a church in less than three hundred feet, and there is a daycare in that church, and an elementary school down the street. So, why would the city be okay with a bar that close to a church and a daycare down the street from an elementary school? And then I would like to read a short statement from the Original Mile Reinvestment Committee. It states, "The committee vision for the Original Mile is to revive the area by building upon the original concept that once made it America's model city, while creating a distinctive, desirable, and quality neighborhood for the future. Can you explain how this new building project lines up with this vision? The mile consisted of individual housing units with no bars or businesses mixed in. If the city passes this project, they are not standing behind the residents of the Original Mile, nor their own city ordinances and codes. I have one last question I would like to ask the council members who will be voting. If this project was being built in your neighborhood, across the street from your home, how would you vote?"
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that wants to address council? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Molly Morell, three thirteen, East Kitty Hawk Drive. I have several things I wanna speak about, not just the Original Mile, what's going on over there. And, and people are upset. They are very upset. First of all, sidewalks were supposed to be built there. This was approved. There's no sidewalks. I have a daughter in a wheelchair. Have you ever tried to push anybody in a wheelchair, even to the school? From my house, and I live halfway up the block from Key. It is hell. Try pushing a wheelchair and hitting cracks, or pushing in the street with cars coming at you. And those little children walk to school and back down the street from that, and children from Jarman and the high school come and pick up younger children. It is busy, extremely busy. And shouldn't that school be handicap access? Do you realize that almost a thousand children go to school there? Do you know, I lived in Texas. There was nothing like that. In Houston, in Dallas, LA does not have schools that big, nor New York City. We have an extremely large elementary school. And furthermore, while I'm on that subject, the first day of school, the first thing I noticed, the back windows of the school were knocked out. That made me furious. That's a nine-million-dollar school. It should have video surveillance, and I don't know if that's a city thing, or because the park's right there next to it, or that's a school thing, but if you're knocking out windows, getting to a school that's supposed to be high-tech, from what I understand, it's dangerous. That's dangerous to the faculty, the staff, and the children. That school should be under a video surveillance all the time. The other thing I wanted to speak of, besides no handicap access and the sidewalks, was about going into Key, and I heard them talking about roundabouts and everything. That is the biggest mess there ever was. Whoever designed that, I want to personally say, they are idiot. They do not know how to design anything, and those sidewalks coming into that. If you're in a wheelchair, even a motorized wheelchair, that is dangerous. That whole thing needs torn out and completely redone. That is a disaster. That neighborhood is full of elderly people. We had elderly people here tonight. This is my other subject, volunteerism. I heard you, Mayor Dukes. I heard your speech. I watched it. I watched our chief of police also ask for volunteerism. If we can't get volunteers, and I do, I work two jobs, and I have a daughter in a wheelchair and a granddaughter to take care of. My time is stretched very thin. But, we have other sources I know. For one thing, they used to go to the schools, high school students. Why couldn't high school students be given incentives? I don't care if it's gift certificates to that new theater that everybody's making the big whoop-de-doo about, or if it's restaurants, give them gift certificates, or give them credits when they're in school. And that looks pretty good on, on a application to a college. There's ways to do this, and there's enough businesses here. Midwest City is not no backwater. It's a big city. It's a small town that's thriving, and it always has been. I guess I could say a lot more, but I've lived here, right, at thirty years, and I like Midwest City. There's some things I, I would improve. I really would. But our elderly, they need help. We are aging out. I'm aging. I was thirty-four years old when I come here. My God. I'm an old great-grandma now. But people need help, and if we don't help our own, we are worse than animals. Civilization will not thrive. A city will not do no good unless it takes care of its own. And you know kindness is the greatest thing that you can do. Be kind to other people. There just something, you know, I'm throwing it out there. I don't have a lot of time to give, and I can't go out, and I can't volunteer what money I have. I have to pay bills like everyone else. I'd like to have that ten-thousand-dollar loan, but here's the thing. I have to wait till I can get my social security, so I know I got that money coming in, because what if I take what I do have saved, and I can't pay my electric? And my God, I'd like to do other things, too. And a lot of these elderly people, I hired people to work on my house. They stole from me. Literally stole from me. What could you do? Nothing. Your word against them. But, if we had volunteers that were overseen by people that have, have common sense, just common sense, and that are kind, I know it can be done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
My name's, my name's Steve Smith. Address is five twenty-eight East Arkup. I'm sorry, I'm a little gravelly tonight. You know, I, I used to be proud of being Midwesternian. Grew up here, graduated, spent much, much, much of my life here. I'm still in a local area around here, and get to see what happens and what doesn't happen. And, you know, I was really, uh, I was really put aside when Midwest City built that shopping center over there, and the reason why was this. It's not that, it's not that you guys can't do something and make money for the city and then pat yourselves on the back for it. It's because I had two neighbors. They were in the eighties. They lived in houses across the street from my house at this time. It's over on Boyne Drive. And the city bought their house and made them move out. Eighty years old. Had to pick up everything I owned and leave. They didn't compensate them for them. They didn't do anything for them. This is what people, this is what the city ought to do for people when they're eighty years old, and you're forcing them to move out of the house. Now, for me, you bought me out, no big deal, you know? Took my money, bought another house. But I'm really talking to the people here who are silver, silver-headed tonight. I watched people stumble over steps. I watched people barely able to get up and down and around down here tonight because they had concern for what's going on down here. Now, if you've been here long enough, and most of you hadn't, you know, you might remember the Fleetwood apartment- the Fleetwood Apartments over on 29th Street. There were literally hundreds of apartments, some of them one-bedroom, and they were quite a menace for Midwest City. If you would talk to anybody, anybody in the city at the time, they would really talk about how bad that was for Midwest City to have those, and they were happy to see them go, you know? But what this guy's proposing, you know, he can paint it however he wants to, you know? You can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Ray Opelka, 336-338 Babb Drive. Couple of kudos I want to say first off before I get started. First off, Mayor, kudos to you for your meeting that you have on Tuesday, the first Tuesday over there. It was good meeting you and getting to know you a little better and talking with you. Those kudos to you. Also, I want to give kudos to Kim McNew. I wish I'd been able to do this when there were other people from the city here, but she's spent a lot of time, her own personal time, educating the city and the neighbors and the people in the Original Mile about what's going on, what's being planned. So, Kim, kudos to you as well. I'm not going to speak long, very quick, directly to the point. When I spoke to the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago about this proposed venture, I spoke about two main things, predominantly the sidewalks and also, which has been brought up, and also about the potential for the bar that is there. And Mayor, you and I spoke a little about it as well. And something occurred to me after the fact, though, is that, I'm not going to beat up the stuff about the sidewalks, we already know that, but what we discussed was self-sustainability of the two businesses that would be down there. You said there's supposed to be two businesses. One is, I can't remember what the one was, but the other, like a craft beer place or something like this, was the thing about putting in there. And I was like, a couple of days ago, I was thinking about it, and I was like, oh, my gosh. So now we're going to put in a bar in which we hope it's be self-sustainable by local people coming to it that now have to walk home at midnight, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, drunk down the street because there are no sidewalks. Or lights. I'm sorry, that's foolish. I mean, think about it, really. So you want people from the local area to sustain this business, and so people will come in and then they walk home drunk, potentially. I just think that's absolutely ridiculous. And something that was mentioned earlier, sir, Mr. Reed, when you were talking about, I think it was you that mentioned a tort action, if, this could also apply in that situation as well. Sidewalks have been brought up, and it is known by the council, is aware, it's been in the meeting minutes and everything else, and yet you haven't put sidewalks in this area, and somebody gets hit because they're in the street, can council members say lawsuit? I mean, seriously, think about it. You know, Midwest City's trying to get itself ahead, and yet you can be set back like that. So I don't want to go anywhere. One thing I want to mention, though, that was brought to my attention, I looked at the meeting minutes from the council, from the Planning Council, and it was stated that several people spoke in favor of the proposal. That's a lie. I don't know who did the minutes up. I don't know who reviewed it, but that was an absolute lie. One person spoke in favor of it. That was Jeff Johnson. 15 to 20 people spoke against it. Yet the minutes say several people spoke in favor of this proposal. It was not stated that anybody spoke against it. So my thing to the council is, are you sugarcoating your own minutes? That was wrong. And when you put that out there for the rest of the city to look at and go, oh, well, people are speaking about it in favor of it, for the ones who could make it, that's doing everybody, not only the council, but that's doing your city a disservice when you're, in essence, lying in your own council meeting minutes. Sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I have quite a few things to take issue with on this spud plan. First off, I would like to just also commend Kim McNew, because if not for her efforts around the neighborhood, I probably wouldn't have never had been here. She's done yeoman's work in making sure that people are informed about what's going on here. And so I appreciate her calls and emails about this issue. I also want to take just a minute to say how disappointed I was in the way in which we were received by the Planning Commission at the hearing, because numerous issues of safety, of alcohol, you know, the lighting, the traffic, the parking were brought up. And in their discussion afterward, you know, during that portion of their meeting, none of those were addressed. So it's pretty infuriating to just have it dismissed out of hand and then for them to proceed to make the recommendation to approve. Now, I'd like to just say that according to the Midwest City Code, it's my belief that this spud design statement should be dismissed out of hand, because the spud code says that it may be authorized for only one conventional zoning district. Now, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, I'm not sure I'm understanding that correctly, but I would guess you're changing the residential, single detached with the spud, so that would be one district. And I'm unsure of whether or not the portion, that there is a portion of that that is currently zoned for public, because I know that the Original Mile Revitalization Plan recommends that it be public, park, trails. That's the recommendation of the revitalization plan. As you read further on the spud code, it says, "One conventional zoning district shall regulate all uses and development regulations not identified as being modified." This spud design statement is clearly asking for government of two zoning districts, okay? And it's stated by the city staff as well that it's going to be governed by two zoning districts. To me, that seems just against the city code straight away. Now, I'm sure there's greater legal minds that, you know, maybe take issue with that. But I can say that even if it is permissible to apply both of these codes, or if just one is, there are modifications that are needed in order to bring this about to meet what is required in community commercial. You'll have to forgive me for getting a little bit tongue-tied on this, but for instance, parking and loading zones for community commercial, there's no loading addressed in any of this. Now, I know in the Community Development Director's recommendation to the Planning Commission to approve, that he refers to a site plan. Now, I've been to the Community Development Office and viewed the packet that was there. I never saw a site plan. So it could be that the city is in possession of a site plan that's not even required to be submitted yet for the spud and has not made it available for us to see. I don't know if that's the case. But I know it is referenced in his document here to the planning chairman and Planning Whenever I look at the, so I think for us to validly, to most inform, in an informed way, there are concerns about this project, we should be entitled to see what has been submitted so far. The city has negotiated on that. There are numerous issues. I look at the spud design statement, and I see what appears to be dumpsters on the property with no, they do have the enclosure for dumpsters, but they're situated right there on the, next to the driveway going in from Jacobs, and in such a way that the truck is going to have to back out onto the street where kids pass through going to school. And that's not permitted according to the parking, you know, section five of the parking and loading, according to my reading. And I don't have that document with me, but I guess I failed to print that portion. But it says, well, whenever I spoke to the Planning Commission, I brought up legacy corners, legacy corner apartments. And I spoke about the way in which that project had numerous restrictions put on it in order to, you know, make it happen, and my words, is to make sure it didn't go south on the I do have the two and a half pages of Midwest City Code that address that. And what you find when you read that is it is very restrictive. And my comments to the Planning Commission were that this particular project is not in any way restrictive. It's taking great liberties to allow the developer to do numerous things that should not be allowed. It also says in the spud code, "Design of the spud shall be governed by the regulations of only one conventional zoning district. The use regulations of the conventional zoning district can only be modified to decrease, not increase, the number of allowed uses." Again, this should be dismissed out of hand. And the development regulations of the conventional zoning district are modified only to make them more restrictive, not less restrictive. There's no way any one of you can look at this and say that that's not a direct contradiction right there. Building code requirements shall not be reduced in the design of a spud. We're asking for an eight-foot setback for a 45-foot building. Now, Legacy Corner, again, whenever it was approved, there were concerns about the property on the west, Blue Ridge, I think is the name of the street over there. It's in here. All building setbacks within appendix A of this code for R4 high-density residential district shall be met. Legacy Corner had to meet and exceed all of the requirements to be high-density residential. Furthermore, no building shall be constructed within 75 feet of the west property line, that neighborhood over there, the one that mattered. Also, construction within 99 feet of the west property line shall be limited to two-story maximum height, not to exceed 32 feet. Any building within 99 feet of the west property line shall have no windows or openings. Now, the artist's rendering of this project has windows all around, and you're talking about 45-foot high right next door to that man's house over there on Jacobs. From the spud code, "The applicant should be prepared to provide amenities and services that may not be required or possible in a conventional development." The design standards for spud. "The proposed spud shall be designed to provide for the unified development of the area in accordance with the spirit and purpose of the comprehensive plan and the land uses and zoning districts adjacent to it." Now, this document from the Community Development Director, again, says, "Was designed with mindful consideration of the comprehensive plan and Original Mile revitalization plan." Well, that mindful consideration is how to dismiss those plans, in my opinion, because I have numerous instances of what is required or what is recommended and was adopted by the city council in the revitalization plan. Things that have not come to pass, lighting. There is, the lighting in the Original Square Mile is supposed to take priority for the new lighting in all the other parts of the city. Well, I've seen new LED lights up and down Post Road, and I know they're elsewhere, but I know they're on Post. I haven't seen any in the Original Square Mile. I haven't seen any of the traffic calming measures that are successful, unless bouncing off a curb over on Key Boulevard is successful. Key Boulevard at Kitty Hawk and Babb are listed in the revitalization plan as intersections with the highest accident rate. Okay? That's right there where the kids walk to school. Now, unless I've missed it, and I may have, somebody may correct me, I haven't even seen painted crosswalks there. A raised crosswalk is recommended in the revitalization plan. So we're putting a bar before a crosswalk, right here. And there are numerous issues with the fact of just what is being allowed there. Again, I mentioned the dumpsters, the parking, you shouldn't have to back up, and maybe parallel parking is not considered to be backing on the street. I'm sure it's talking about angled parking more is what that code is directed at. But the commercial use unit classifications and regulations, administrative and professional office, that's probably not a big problem to have in a neighborhood. Animals, grooming and sales, who can argue with that?
Sir, for the sake of time...
Yes.
You've made some very good points.
Thank you.
Could I ask you to kind of wrap it up? We do have two more agendas to get through.
Very good.
But you are making some very good points.
Okay. Convenience sales and personal services, I believe, is one of them. And it states, "Furthermore, only uses that do not create increased traffic, noise, or such other impacts considered incompatible with a residential use will be permitted." Typical of these is grocery stores, drugstores, ice cream parlors, drinking establishments. Lots shall not abut residentially developed properties on the side. Shelf front only onto an arterial street. There is no arterial there. Kitty Hawk is a channel. The others are whatever they're called, neighborhood streets. I don't, I can't recall the designation of those. Kitty Hawk is considered a channel. It's not an arterial. In fact, if you read the spud further down, the spud code, you find that spud is intended to be on an arterial. It is not supposed to be in the neighborhood like this. Drinking establishments, 4422. Typical uses include taverns, dance halls, and mixed beverage establishments in which food items are served but as accessory to the drinking establishment. It's a drinking establishment. Live entertainment is permitted. That's great. Yeah, and that'll be right next door to some man's house. Eating establishments, they are located at high-capacity, high-volume sites that are easily accessed by vehicles and pedestrians. and pedestrians. Uh-oh. I'm being encouraged to wrap it up again. So I want to say this. All of this knowledge that I just attained on this subject matter here came from two nights of staying up all night. It seems to me that this creates a lot of problems for the city to go forward with this. And I'll be kind of ticked off if, you know, my tax dollars are spent fighting for it whenever there's perhaps a legal challenge. I don't know if that's the case. Again, I'm not a lawyer. But I would think that it could have been more thoroughly researched by a lot of different people with the city. And so the fact that it's being proposed there, it shows a very low level of concern with the goals of the original mile revitalization plan. I can tell you numerous... I could sit here for quite a while telling you the numerous recommendations that were, again, were adopted by the city for the revitalization plan that are at odds with this project. Okay? Parks and trails, lighting, these things were mentioned for the square mile and not this. I'm not opposed to economic development for the city. I think it's been a great thing, what's happened down there on Air Depot. Again, 15th and Air Depot is what's supposed to be developed according to the plan. And I just... I have to... I'd be remiss if I didn't say one more thing. I know the parking keeps coming up. I took the opportunity today to go by Schlotzky's. And frankly, I'm a little miffed that certain things have been proposed or put forth by the city and the developer. To justify this, there are other developments in Oklahoma City that were mentioned. The Vic, which I could find absolutely zero information on, which is apparently a development in the Plaza Gatewood District. 600 North High was mentioned as a... The Seven, which is a, you know, big stack of apartment buildings. It's helping... They're using that to justify this. Well, those... And it says that a school building to the south of them is been remodeled into a office building, but that's not the case. It's also apartments. And it says it's bordered on three sides by... Or all sides, I believe, three or four sides by a single-family residential. What it's bordered by is a sheltered neighborhood where the homes have been so dilapidated, they've been leveled, and the area is very adjacent to the Research Park and Oklahoma Health Sciences Center. So that's who it serves. Altogether different from Mill West City. The Vic, again, I could not find anything on it. The Plaza Loss are on 16th Street, which has been commercial. You know, it's altogether different from what you're looking at here. At any rate, I guess I lost my original train of thought as trying to wrap it up whenever I start talking about that. But I just think a lot of misinformation has been set out here in relation to this project and that it should not be approved. When you think about the drainage, it was stated in here that drainage is not going to be increased. You have all that earth soaking up rain, and then you're going to take that away and put concrete? I mean, that just defies believability. Okay? That water's running off those roofs, it's running off that concrete, it's running out onto the street. Yeah, I'll be back in January if that's... If this thing's still...
Thank you, sir.
I wish to address council from this position today since this changed from being a outright discussion item to being basically moved. I am asking that after we take this time and reset this for January, that we have another round of community meetings on what the results are that are found from the traffic study that's going to be done, et cetera, in order to allow the people to be informed. And that, as you've seen, there are a number of people who spoke this evening on these issues. There are a number of people who are very concerned about these issues. Otherwise, I wouldn't be receiving all of the contact that I've received about this matter, and all these people wouldn't be speaking to you this evening. So I would ask that when it is set on the agenda in January, that an appropriate amount of time be allotted to it to allow the people to speak. Because quite frankly, I was present at the last meeting where it was discussed before the planning commission, and the planning commission chose to significantly curtail the information that was being put forward to them by the people who appeared to speak on the issue. So that's my suggestion.
Yes, ma'am. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and close out the public discussion portion of this just at the second time. We do have two other agendas that we do have to address. And ladies and gentlemen, although I can't directly talk to you about... I do appreciate the time. I appreciate the effort. Yes?
Can I give like three minutes?
You've got it.
It might go three and a half.
You've got it. I'm not putting a clock on you, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's okay. I'm a little shy, so, you know. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I do appreciate you taking the time for all of us, and I know it's late. And I just wanted to say, my name is Richard McCoy, 222 East Jacobs Drive. And I've never been accused of being the smartest guy or making all the right decisions, especially the first time. Okay? If you ask anybody, they'd tell you, "I came about the right decision because the only one left." Okay? But this one, this is a no-brainer. It really is. This isn't that tough, even for a guy like me. This is a no-brainer. And I want to go on further to... Sorry, I'm a little nervous. And I want to say, when we bought our house, we bought it with the frame of mind that we were going to have a little, you know, extra money, time, growing family, improve it, add a garage, add some bedrooms. Long story short, we're told we can't do it because we have to keep the original footprint. You know, that was years ago, when I made a lot more money than I make now, and construction costs were cheaper, constructing itself, it's cheaper than materials. There's no way I could do that now. As far as the original mile, I mean, this affects the whole original mile, not just our block. I mean, I don't know why we're limited to just... Whenever we sign a petition, just those in the 300 feet. This is affecting the whole mile. And I'll just say just a couple more things, and I'll let you guys go home. It was said that we need to bring, you know, this neighborhood into the 21st century. Actually, it was kind of in a demeaning way. We have small houses, no AC, no garages. Well, it's the code in the city that it's their fault we don't have the garages. We're not allowed to put garages back where they were. So it's kind of one of those things that created its own problem. And with that said, I mean, I do want to lighten it up a little bit and say that we have brought it into 21st century around my house. We got one of them fancy lightning boxes to cook our food. So, you know, we're doing good. And I think I'm just going to say one more thing, and I'll let you guys go home. I asked that members of the city council that you give us the same opportunity that you're giving the new money. You know, roll back some codes on us so that we can improve our homes. Okay? Honor the elderly in our neighborhood. Honor the original property owners. Honor the disabled. Honor the retired. Honor the single parents. Honor the poor and honor the working class. We work hard. We're good, decent people in the neighborhood. All we want is the same opportunities as the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I don't know where you learned how to do research, but you need to go get your doctor.
He plays a lawyer on TV, doesn't he?
Okay. With that being said, we do have two items on the agenda for further information. Do we need to take action on? No action needed. Is there any further discussion or anything to bring forward, counsel? With that being said, we are hereby adjourned. Would entertain a relief break for about five minutes before we go back into our other agendas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
That's what I'm figuring out right now.
Kim, are you going to take this?
Let's take a break.
I called you back.
Yes, you don't want... No, no, no. Mayor, you're okay? And I wish you'd be back. And then, of course, Sam decides to change what was thrown. But the...
About three and a half.
Oh my gosh, I'm trying to break down. I'll get you some. And once again, thanks for your time.
Nice to meet you. We'll be in touch.
Oh my God, I posted a picture of the doctor that the patient died. And I thought...
That's why I didn't get on.
If you put something on the floor, you're going to have to approach people emotionally. And also talk to the principals of the schools.
I'm letting you get out of here.
And you know, I'm telling you, she's...
Gentlemen, a great start to the presentation with a public announcement.
Idiot supposed to say. He's requesting that we correct it.
Yeah, we got it. Come on, now. Let's just knock.
Okay, introduce your HR director.
I already told him to go home.
Total apologies on my... Total apologies on my side. This is Troy Bradley. He's our new HR director. Troy is from... He lives in Midwest City.
At the Midwest City. And Mr. Moore's ward.
Yep. He's a Southern Cal graduate. We'll forgive him for that, but there he goes.
Yeah.
Football teams, uh, a little...
Well, not Pete Carroll.
Touche.
Troy's been here for... He'll be here two weeks on this Thursday, right?
Yes, sir.
And then he puts his two weeks notice in himself.
Don't say that.
No, I'm here for long haul.
Glad to have Troy here. Troy, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. It was nice to meet many of you. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, according to order, the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority, we do have a consent agenda. Do you agree with that? Do you know what it is? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, second. All in favor? Anybody here saying aye? Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries? New business, public discussion? I hear none. We're hereby adjourned. I call a order in the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda. Once again, I'm not reading that.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, second. All in favor? Anybody here saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries? Anything written for the authority? Hearing none. We're hereby adjourned.